We're going to get started going forward for those of you that are here. This is an ideal crowd for what we're going to try to accomplish with our new meeting structure. So I appreciate you being able to just get it back. We have three setups. We have three committee meetings for six thirty. I think we have extra curriculum and building grounds, the three. So we'll just say we'll do buildings and grounds over here. It's a matter of pulling some chairs up and setting around the table. We'll do curriculum in a back room over here, which will also set up some tables and chairs. I'm sorry, curriculum over here and we'll do extra curriculum in a back room back there. I think I sent out some cordial directions, guidelines for board members and administrators. Do you have any agendas, purpose of meeting, any agenda items? Any discussions you generate, any of those items happening within those committees? Ask for public comments, if there's any community members here participating. It's your chance to comment on each item as you go through it. Well, I'll ask the board members and the administrator if at the end of discussion and public comments for that item, someone should make the note whether that item goes to the agenda for voting board as a discussion or consent item for next week. That's all we need to happen for each of those. Turns out to be a good trial month for this because we have a pretty light agenda, what I think is pretty much non-controversial as well. No heavy duty items, is what I'd say. It's also be good trial month. It's a little comfy, I apologize, but I think we'll get a little bit of good practice running for us. Anybody that's participating and not even administrator or board member, any community members here, certainly free to balance between meetings if you want to secure the topic in one area. That's obviously been discussed, you want to hit HR or one of the other stuff, our meetings that happened. It's not a panacea, you go ahead and check it out. So six thirty we'll run through those meetings. The other two meetings will start at seven fifteen. Once those committees are done, we're all free to go. This will be set up every time we come here on that first Tuesday of the month. Because on occasion, depending upon if it's an HR related issue or budget issue, we may have to have a committee hall we'll do a go. So that's why that seven o'clock gap is in there. So we'll always have this setup available to us. That will always be advanced notice. That's never a surprise coming out of one of the committees. There will always be advanced notice, we're posting a committee the whole way through the process. That's the process. So go through it. We'll ask the administrators and the board members to kind of sign themselves to each of the committees. And we'll go through it. Again, agendas look pretty simplistic or standard. It's not be too difficult of a process and that's it. I think we need to go down to the next session after, following the last set of committee meetings. So FYI.
For personnel reasons.
For personnel.
Do you have the, do you have the agenda or?
As I said, we have agendas. At the end of it, so we'll do extra curriculum and these building the grounds right over here.
There's one of the board.
What do you, what do you?
There's the board.
The extra curriculum is nothing. There's nothing in there that we need to be worried about.
I printed them.
My man, Trevor Curry's on top of this shit.
I printed them too.
I mean.
Thanks Charlie.
Hey, look, let's get this shit popping.
I'm, I'm, just stay there Cameron, you're fine. You're not going to be bothered.
It's gonna be weird talking on this like.
Yeah. Alright, well Mr. Travers is busy right now. You'll have to wait. You can love on the later season.
Yeah, if you want to turn around, we can rearrange your chairs. Let's make it so we can all interact. I mean, it's a different process.
Well, I got this shot right here. I'm not going to be here per se, but my corner is.
Charlie, that's up. Oh, I have one. I have one. I have one. Thank you.
Yeah.
Would you like one?
Thank you.
Would you like one please?
Nope, I have one. Thank you.
Make sure?
Yep, I printed them out. I got them all.
You're welcome. That's in board docs as well, but I brought it to reference.
Yeah, like the extra curriculars.
Well, that's Brad. I did see that.
I forgot. I wasn't sure what that is either. I know, that was kinda weird. Yeah, I guess it's extra curricular.
I don't know if I should put anything out.
That's okay.
Yeah, just pull a chair.
I'll sit next to Mr. Travers because he won't bite me. I do know about that. I'll stick my kid on you.
How you make it? I got you next.
We are going to get started. The first thing on the agenda, number one, is to approve the following adoption of new courses, American Sign Language seven to eight and American Sign Language one. So I'll turn over to Ed and we can.
Sure.
That'll be the, this would be the final adoption. We've already undergone a tentative adoption. We have American Sign Language one.
Can you speak up just a little bit? I have a hard trouble hearing you on the side.
Do you want to come over on this line, maybe closer? There's so many of us.
I don't exactly remember what I was saying, but American Sign Language seven and eight is strictly for seventh and eighth graders. And it's a semester course. American Sign, Sign Language one is a year-long course. And that is also available for middle school students who have a customized schedule. So these, these documents are on the second month of approval. Can I answer any questions?
I have a question. So the book that we're looking at is for American Sign Language one, correct?
It is.
And do we have a book or have we approved a book for Sign Language seven through eight?
No, and there wouldn't be a book necessarily for every course. Sign Language seven and eight is not going to use a textbook per se. She's using other resources for that. And it's a, it's what I would call an exploratory introductory level course. And so the resources that we're presenting to, she may use to plan lessons in seven and eight. And in fact, this isn't, this is not a textbook that we would purchase for every student. This is being used as a classroom resource. The most we would purchase would be a classroom set that would be shared. We're not intending to purchase like a book for every student to take home with them.
For even for American Sign Language one?
Yes.
Every student doesn't get a book?
No, they can use a book in class, but it's not very book-driven as a course. It's actually very performance task-driven. Because they're actually signing, they're having Congresses send it to one another in sign. And there are multitudes of online resources. This book has online resources that she can use.
Can we buy it for the kids?
And so her course is built in school G and as she goes through her lessons, the book would maybe be used as.
I want to buy it for my daughter. She loves.
For both of the classes?
For both of the classes. And even as we go forward, she'll continue to write for the next year. So we'll be talking about that when we get to the career planner. And, you know, we're just kind of looking at resources for that course as we go. This is the textbook that she wanted to use as a resource.
Okay.
I don't know if we had a chance to read through the actual curriculum.
Yeah, well, I have a printer for others, so.
Yeah, but that's really helpful to see that too, because you can see that the language seven and eight is fairly short. And so it's not going to be as extensive, I think, as a sign language one.
And the seven and eight is a half-year class? I'm sorry, is it a half? Okay.
Can I just ask, Michelle, were you here when they did the presentation on American Sign Language?
Yeah, last week or the two weeks.
No, it was the kids and not when they were here. Just because, just to give you from a parent's perspective, I think this is a fabulous addition into this curriculum. One, because you have students who can't necessarily vocalize what it is that they're trying to communicate with you. And so they are able to thrive and succeed in a different type of language and be able to succeed in a classroom that is more geared toward like a kinetic type of education, moving around, using your hands, talking, using different types of educational pieces. So I would say, and I'm, I'm telling this from my perspective, because I have a special needs daughter who actually takes this course. It is one of her regular ed classes. Now she does take it with some accommodations. But she is beyond, like completely exploding the instructor's mind in regards to how quickly she is able to pick things up and sign through. So I think this is great because you're, as we go out and I don't know if you've seen like out in different parts of the areas of the country, there have been a lot of places who have now gone to American Sign as an additional language to be able to, like Starbucks just did it. They have it, I believe out in California, if I'm not mistaken, they just opened a brand-new store that is completely all American Sign Language. And so the non-hearing folks are getting at least a little bit of a voice. So I think this is very good, because that was, my question was to offer, ask if we were offering a second year. Because I believe that kids like mine and other kids who learn kinetically would strive in this, in this particular course.
We intend to continue to add each year. We really had a lot of sections of ASL one this year. And that is the idea behind that, will generate interest, which we feel is successful. As the years go, we're looking at American Sign Language two, to move the students who are still interested. American Sign Language three perhaps. And that's where we hope to capture some students who may go on to careers that are based in needing to know sign language, which believe it or not, being close to Harrisburg, the capital of state, there, there are quite a few career opportunities for interpreters and a whole gamut of other things that can be done with American Sign Language. So we feel really exclusive in offering this. There are not high schools in the area or even the state other than that are offering this at this time. So it's really a source of pride for us and we feel a source of strength and benefit to our students. So we don't expect as many students to be taking American Sign Language one next year. We'll have to limit it because we'll be making room for American Sign Language two students in that teacher's schedule.
When, when are they looking to add these classes? They're already in effect, right?
They are.
So why are we waiting till November 5th to bring on books? I mean.
You can see by the books that we have there that they've been used as a teacher resource. To be honest with you, the teacher's not even certain that she wants to order the books for the year. She's still looking at using the resources in more a teacher resource fashion. She's like, she's enjoying going through the year and determining how she wants to direct the class, as opposed to making an impulsive purchase. She's someone that Dr. Wanger and I have met with repeatedly, based on what her vision and plan for courses are. She's very knowledgeable and she's worked in a hearing impaired community for years. Good for her. Thank you.
It's a good class. It's just, why wait till, you know, two months into the school year?
She probably had to have a feel of what she was going to need or use too, on how well the kids were going to pick things up for.
I understand that.
There's so much other things that she can pull from, rather than, I think it was smart of her to check it out first.
Just don't make sense.
Well, this isn't, it's taught very much. You know, like you said, it's in a handful of places teaching. And so I think that's something that's great.
It is being offered as a language class, correct?
World language. Yes, it's in our world language department.
It's my understanding that colleges do not count ASL as a language.
Correct.
So I do believe we might be leading parents and students astray by putting it there in the course catalog or in the handbook or whatever.
There's a lot of classes that are like that.
Except that as a world language credit.
Well, it doesn't matter what the state says, but if we're leading parents and students astray, that's not what our goal is. Right? We don't want them to be thinking that they are taking a language when they go to college and it's not counted as a language.
Right. So what she's saying is you probably are going to need to put something in the vernacular that states that it's not accepted in college courses.
I, I'm not, I'm not ready to see that it's not accepted at colleges.
Mrs. Fox, don't you teach at a college?
I teach at Hack. I could check with our language people, but it's my understanding that you're not going to be able to take even four years of ASL or a year and then test out of high school classes when you move on to a two-year school or four-year school.
So you would have to do, you have to do this and a language.
And they're going to save some time in college by doing that.
These classes they added for the campus, they ain't accredited.
But it is considered a language.
What do I know?
It's considered a language, but not a foreign language in that sense.
So maybe you don't currently, we don't currently require language.
No, but she's saying for.
But do we want to prepare students for what their goal is? Is that not what we want to do?
I think if I can jump in, the perception, right, we want parents not.
Right, we want them to understand what this course is going to count for when they leave Northern Lebanon.
So they would have to take another language on top of this to get that credit for college. Yeah.
What we need to investigate is if it's going to be counted as a language credit for colleges that are accepting languages. And if indeed it's not, we can put a qualifier in there, alerting parents and say, this may not be. That's what we need to investigate at this point.
And are we required?
If they're thinking it counts the same as a Spanish one and two kind of thing, you want to make sure they understand it's not comparable. Colleges aren't going to recognize it that way.
And are we required?
It is a good question for me, yeah.
Are we required to offer a certain number of foreign language?
We were, we actually worked with PVE. I'm not, I'm not going to answer your specific question, I, because I will get an answer for you. You're required to offer languages in the high school and I believe you're required to offer two. We worked directly with PVE to start this class. That was our process last year. We started with PVE. The, the conversation of will a college accept this? You know, we didn't have that, but we're not, we're not, we're not, we graduate other students that go to college that don't take a language at all because we're not requiring it. So it may be something that we need to look at in the overall program of studies.
So it could be an elective.
It is an elective. All of our world languages are elective credits. They're all.
And just as we don't need, we need to make sure that we're not having people think that they are taking a language that's going to be nationwide accepted in any college that they go into and thinking that they're not going to have to take a language and go in and say, oh, well now I can take a COUT class or now I can take a STICSS or now I can take this, because they already are going into thinking that they already have a language.
There's a lot of courses though that are wrong that they don't, they don't recognize.
All of our world languages are elective credits. They're all elective credits.
It's not just world.
You gotta check it out.
Well, that one makes it difficult because then if the kids, if somebody would want to do this, the sign language.
I know we're required. I will look that up for you. I believe we will require to offer two.
Okay, and we are currently still offering German or no?
We're offering German currently, yes.
Okay, so the German and the Spanish would count if ASL is not counted by the state.
That's correct.
Who's, not to beat a dead horse here, who signs off, like when I taught high school, guidance counselor always had the, like the sign-off on that course selection. Like a kid just didn't, and again, I don't want to, I don't know how it's done here, but you just never filled your courses out, submitted it, and then, you know, three months later, oh man, I, you know, a parent calls up and says, well, you're two credits short, you're three credits short, or this doesn't. Does the, does the guidance counselor review? So, I mean, so a lot of that, that perception, that communication between parents should be happening with the guidance counselor collaboration, I think.
That's if they're, they're choosing their class as well in advance. If they're only getting their schedules shortly before school starts, then the conversation doesn't have time to happen.
Actually, they happen in December and January, and they did last year.
The year before.
The conversations with students happen in December and January in the high school.
For the campus?
Every year.
That was for the campus.
Every year.
They were about to camp.
Happen in December and January. That's not new. It's the way it's been.
Okay.
So the conversations with each high school student, they go into ninth grade classes, talk about their years ahead. They go into eighth grade classes to talk about the years ahead and they meet with each individual student to create a schedule for the next year. Scheduling with a student and using a master schedule to put students into classes are two different operations that we do. So our scheduling piece that was in August was based on a master schedule, not based on course selection. So that, they're the two different things, the course selection and scheduling.
I like it. I want to take it.
You would really want to take it if you went into class.
I already asked her if she would teach it in my community.
They use this in daycare. I mean, they're teaching baby sister. This is worldwide.
My son was a year and was doing sign language before talking.
Putting the cart before the horse.
Okay, so number two, approve the final adoption of the new textbook, Signing Naturally Unites, one through six, Smith, Lenz and Nikos. Course is American Sign Language one, and we've already passed that around. I think for number one, quickly go back, should we make that a consensus item or a?
Thank you.
Yes, we need to make that decision.
If maybe by that time we may have some information, make it a discussion.
I think we should make it a discussion.
I believe this is to approve the curriculum. I don't think that it's exactly to approve anything else.
Right.
It would be to approve the curricular documents. I'm just.
Right.
That we can answer some questions based on what we talked about in the career planner. I would think that would go to item three that we're going to discuss next.
So do, do you want that as discussion or consensus? I, I feel like because of the amount of questions, that it would be good for us to stop and for you to give us an update on what you have found out.
And for the board members that aren't participating, it's just to give a discussion.
Right.
Get the quick answers, get the answers.
Right, I think that would be good. Okay, so number two, since we've already kind of talked about the textbook along with number one, are we good with having that as a consensus item?
Yes.
So number two.
You guys approve consensus.
Consent for number two.
Your two consents. Okay, number three, approve the Northern Lebanon Career Planner for nineteen twenty. Why does it say it twice?
Because once the middle school.
Well, one's high school.
Oh yeah, high school and middle school.
You have them both in front of you and they're in board docs. Okay, and so what you have, I'll just give you a few minutes, just a little quick description of what you have in front of you. And some things I'd like to highlight. So in the high school and the middle school planner, the things you see in red are changes for next year. Or they are things that the teachers, well, I'll start out by saying, these are all changes that the department recommended to the counseling office and the administrators. And so this is a process that every year, the section of the career planner that pertains to the department is sent to the department chair. They share with their team. The teachers come back with things that they like that are tweaks. They come back with things they'd like to add to their department. They come back with suggestions. We have discussions about those things and then they go into the career planner. You will see things in red that are changes for next year. You may see things struck through. That means it's going to be removed. You may see things highlighted in red and, and only one thing in the whole course is highlighted and it may be the grade level or the, or the prerequisites. So those are things that are changes for next year. When you see something that's a course in development, that's a course that we're ready to go with. We have the curriculum and the new course approval forms ready to go. And if you see something that's designated as new course, that's something we're looking to develop this year for board approval in spring and start next year. So that's the difference between a course in development and a new course. Courses in development are ready to go. We have curricular documents and have gone through the new course approval process. And the new courses, we have, we've only gone through the new course approval process. We have not gone through the curriculum writing or any of those kinds of things. So that's one of the reasons that we're sharing this with you at this time, for you to take a look at what we intend to adjust for next year. Another thing I'd like to draw your attention to is in the beginning of the planner, before you get into the courses, we're proposing, and, and our counseling office and our administration has worked through, let's see what page it is. Page four, there's four or five.
Can I interrupt and ask a quick question?
Yes.
This career planner, is this just the kids, what the kids get to pick? I think there's classes.
It's our course catalog. It's our course catalog. We call it a career planner. So if you look at page, if we'll look at whether page number, is this page? It's this page. It talks about what we.
Is it in the middle school or the high school?
It's in the high school.
Okay.
It's, it's about graduation requirements.
Oh yeah.
We currently, we currently require 24 credits for graduation. We'd like to increase that. We have a proposal here for how we would offer students the ability to choose another. And I'll just, just briefly, everyone's required to take four English credits to graduate from Northern Lebanon High School. We'd like to up that for social studies, math and science. However, we're proposing that instead of saying you must take four math, you must take four science, you must take four social studies, that students have a choice based on their career path. So if they're a math student and they'd like to take five maths and one science, they would have the ability to do that. And that's where you see the core elective change to three credits. That actually gives students the ability to take one additional core. Looking around, there's certainly a lot of, my goodness, if you, if you look at different school districts in the, in the IU thirteen alone, there's all different graduation requirements. And it's so difficult to quantify exactly what people take as, they're using this as credit or they have a graduation project that gives credit or they, they have different standards for CTC, IEP students. They have, and so all of those things become part of the graduation plan. But this is intended to increase our rigor and increase what we want students to be able to know, understand and do when they leave here. And we feel that our standards are a little low. We'd like to see that increased. This plan would go into place for students entering ninth grade. So everyone in the high school currently would follow the plan we've already had for them. And the increased credit requirement would be for new students entering the high school as fresh as next year. That's what we would look at doing. Otherwise, like I said, things that are struck through will be removed. Things that are more red, more changes or additions for next year.
I think that means.
Not only.
My only, my only question, I think, career-wise is. I know when I went to college, I had to take last five years back to what I was taking for the career which I was going to. So I just worry that we're taking away from that, like you're saying, math, well you still need the EOLA, you still need the science, you still need the basic when you get there. So how are we ensuring that if you're taking five math and one science?
Because we're not taking anything away. So in, in other words, the proposal suggests keeping everything the way it is, but the additional four credits that students would have as a requirement for graduation would all be things that they can select. But it doesn't change anything that we currently have. So we agree with you. We agree with you. We want all students to have four EOL. We want all students to have three math, three science, three social studies. That's where we are right now. What we're saying is, we think you should have more of those things. We think you should have more science, more math, more social studies. And we have the ability to give it to you, but we need to phase that plan in. Should, I agree. We, we would, we would never let students, for example, trade one of their four Englishes for.
I think maybe cleaning up just the agenda for the ASL two is, is I understand your introduction of classes and the options to students in December and January, and you're saying the parents are aware, but I've experienced not being aware and I know other parents have experienced not being aware. So I think if this is something we're going to do, I would really like to see us clean up that communication. So when we start, maybe parents can go online and access it and see what their kid has chosen and what they're discussing before it's finalized. That way, you know, they don't get that schedule and say to their kid like, well, I know you, you said you wanted to be this, this year, but last year you were talking about going off to college and being astronomers. So I think maybe if we can just kind of clean up that foresight with the parents and giving a little bit more sense of rigor, but I just don't want to see it kind of be where it's at again now where parents are like, why did I just nail my kids taking this course? So that would be a nice addition. Maybe that's a tech thing. Talk to them however we can do it, run it with power, something.
Will the additional four classes have any effect on kids going to the hotel? Will that mess up their schedule significantly or will that be really difficult for them to schedule that last one or two more classes when they want to be really focused on their dream?
We're hopeful that all of our CTC students would be able to take the same amount of classes, but quite frankly, they have different, they have different choices at CTC where sometimes they don't take our courses for things, they take CTC's courses. And we would write into, they would have exceptions. So CTC students, IEP students, that it's routine to say, okay, if, if you haven't met your 28 credits, you've done all these other things that a typical high school student hasn't. And so we waive that for you.
We already do that.
Yes.
Okay, so is this a fact the kids taking a 13th year?
No, I don't think we need to right now.
It affects her.
But we wouldn't, we would need to if we went to 28 credits. Because 28 credits, in this model, students would have the ability to get 32 credits if they took every opportunity. And that's without using V3 or without using course time during our prep, which are all things that are possible. So if you're just a student who's taking classes during period one through nine, you have the ability to get 32 credits in high school. We're asking them to get 28. We're asking them to get twenty-eight.
Right now?
Right. No, we're asking them to get twenty-four right now.
Twenty-four right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-eight, next.
Yes, we're suggesting for the incoming freshman that they would need to get twenty-eight. And we understand that there would need to be written exceptions for what CTC looks like and what other types of students. There's really other things that you can think of that would change someone's path. And we don't want to, we're not trying to, you know, by any means pull those kids back, you know, we're just looking to increase the rigor for students who aren't here for pure academics.
We increase rigor in classes, in what we hope will count. We don't increase rigor by making students take more classes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
But my other question was, if a student were to fail one of these core classes, how do they get caught up when there's not as much? Because those students do need those academic credits.
I'm not sure I'm exactly understanding your question, if you're talking about credit.
Yeah, a student fails, freshman fails. Someone please take it. And they have to take ninth grade English and tenth grade English.
Then they have to take two bios, but one bio has a prerequisite, whatever.
Multiple ways you can make a failed class, we even ask for that, whether it's summer, whether it's taking it the next year.
Summer cost parents.
At the expense of the parent.
Right, but summer is at the expense of the parent. To where there's more options with wiggle room in school to be able to do that. And I think, just as a parent's perspective, with an incoming freshman that you're going to require second additional four credits, you definitely are gonna have to speak to me, because I'm gonna want to know what's going on. Because I don't, I think you already put enough pressure on these kids. I agree with Michelle, I think the rigor belongs in the classroom, and I don't think it's by getting kids more classes and more requirements. And what does this do to those kids who, with the brand-new graduation requirements that were put out by the state? Like, I thought we should be adding those in instead of adding additional courses that they need to now take.
That don't count for nothing.
I think one of those things that if we would decide to do this, I think it would be good to put, like a disclaimer underneath here. Students with IEPs and going to CTC in other circumstances, you know, will have wiggle room, or somehow, however you want to say it.
Well, how's that fair to the kid that don't...
But it doesn't matter, an IEP, an IEP's an IEP, they can't say anything about it.
That's an IP, I'm saying, what about an average kid?
We're working on collecting information for what every high school, the IU does. And so there's all sorts of different kind of turns and twists to how you can look at this. And I think this is really, this is just part of the career planner saying, yeah, this is what we, this is why we want you to look at this. We're offering more things that students are getting credit for in eighth grade. In the past, students could get credit for algebra or Spanish one. We now have ASL, we have other things that eighth graders are able to get high school credit for, and middle school students able to get high school credit for. We're actively trying to put something in place so that those kids have something to do when they're here. We feel like we've increased the amount of selections that students have at the later middle school grades to get high school credit for. And so even though that's always been a practice, it's now something that if we don't look into the future, we could end up with students who have maxed out what they have taken by the end of eleventh grade. We don't want to do that. So we're looking, we're looking at carrying this through to its next conclusion, which would be, what are our current eighth graders gonna take as seniors? So we need to look at that, that's why this is in here.
So then this would eliminate co-op.
I don't know nothing about co-op.
This would eliminate co-op. Kids wouldn't be able to work and get those credits. Half day.
Technically, yes.
So the kids that need to have that trade and want to work and like that. So this is geared towards the kids that are going to those big colleges.
And I'll tell you why. You know, when you look at, who is this, the Zandville Planner? When you look at them, they've already increased their rigor to change in two thousand twenty-one. So they've already added, they have, you know, they're gonna require four English, four math. They talk about how students beginning the class of two thousand twenty-one will be required to earn four credits in science. They talk about what you can, the credits you can earn for certain projects and certain things. Then I look at another one, and Elko, really just very close to us, they're right now only requiring twenty-two credits for graduation. And so I think it's gonna require, I think what that tells me when I look at these things is that it's a local, it's about your local priorities and it's local city making. And that I can gather all this information and share it with you, but when you read through it, it is kind of difficult to compare. And I'll give you another example, you can see in our materials that we require a computer class. We require a set number of core electives versus any electives. So a core elective is an elective that you choose in English. And a typical other elective may be an ag, something that's unique to us. Other districts require you to take different things. So there's actually a personal finance survival course that they're offering and requiring for graduation at CoCalico. So sometimes it's a complete look and a change of even just the courses that you're requiring for graduation, but it is, it is really difficult to compare. So all, we can compare numbers real easily, but then the other difficulty with that is if this blocks schedule, it looks like we already have a lot more credits that students are required to have when they graduate. So if there's a little bit of apples to oranges, so that's why it's not just a chart that you can hand to people. We can certainly have more of a discussion about what other high schools in the IU are doing, if that's where the board, and that's kind of why I brought these things to, I wasn't really sure what the questions were gonna be asked. And so this is the time when you think about what you would like to have prepared for next week for...
What about co-op if you do this? Like kids that do co-op?
Again, that would go with CTC, it would go with, you know, any student who has a different set of circumstances, that we value those things. And so we would find a way that those students would manage to graduate with those things being valued.
So our goal in increasing the number of credits is to increase rigor and prevent students from having as many academic drops or to... What is the question, if you tell me? We are adding more credits required for graduation because...
We want students to be very, very well-prepared when they leave here. We want to offer everything that we can, and we can offer these things. And so we think that when we have high school seniors who are college-bound, who are telling us that they have nothing to take. And that's before this year, before last year, we had students saying that to us, that's a problem. And so we need to readjust, and we need to make sure that they have something to take. We need to make sure that when we're offering things in eighth grade that students can get high school credit for, that we're not leaving them with no options. So by increasing the number of classes that we're asking them to take, we feel we're accomplishing a valuable, multiple objectives.
If our goal is to increase rigor, and our eighth graders are taking these classes and getting high school credits and being successful, we have not increased rigor, we've just given them more credits. To increase rigor, we're going up higher on Bloom's taxonomy and asking them to conceptualize these concepts.
That's crap, I probably shouldn't have used the word rigor. You just feel that we want to offer more.
Oh, my God.
Can I ask, can I ask them?
Cause you're unprepared.
So why is this just coming out now? Like, I know Mr. Skogen has said that this has not yet been approved. However, you're taking an entire population of eighth graders whose parents are now coming into the high school and maybe have or have not gotten any information as into how high schools run. And we had a debacle last year by putting in the entire campus model when it was disapproved. And we have parents who are already upset in regards to what's going on, but yet now you're gonna turn around and what it appears by just, and I can't see it because I'm a parent. But what it appears is that you're gonna turn around and do the same thing this year by adding something else in, requiring additional four credits without giving a voice to any of the parents or to even asking the parents as into what it is that they may want for their children, or how the kids may feel about that, or anything else. So you're turning around and doing the same thing that we were assured by many board members that was not going to happen again.
And it did.
You may want to separate, changing the requirements for credits for graduation, separate that from the career planner, so that the work can continue on the career planner.
Agreed.
It sounds like it's one and the same. You may wish to separate those, because that's a big decision, you're changing the number of credits to graduate at Northern Lebanon and get diploma. That's a separate issue to be discussed versus the career planner, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
We actually looked at board policy way back when we started having these conversations with our, with our counseling office, and we can't find in board policy where this is defined. So it seems as if it may be an administrative recommendation, that the board policy left it to administrative recommendations. That's certainly not a reason to continue discussing it, but that's certainly a rationale for why we put it in the career planner and we stand by it.
Without parent input, yeah.
We're changing graduation requirements.
It don't matter, they'll just do what they want anyway. Why waste time?
Because if the career planner needs to get done, there's a lot of work that needs to be done this way.
Right.
You can use several months to discuss that.
And work out the kinks.
And work out, yes.
Instead of like just putting stuff in the play.
That's a very good suggestion.
Not having a plan.
At least the parents at least have an option to then to speak about it, rather than it just being shoved down their throats.
Well, why change it if it's already working? Twenty-four credits, so I mean, why keep adding? Anybody? Nobody know?
I was thinking, because we've heard that kids are getting ready to go to college and they don't have what they need.
Yeah, but not...
Yeah, but they don't need four study halls either, and they got that now.
Test scores, we've heard it from every, we're looking at any and every way we can to improve ourselves.
Well, what about kids with three study halls?
I understand that there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of animosity here, and what I'm telling you is, this is, this is...
It's, we can't trust you, that's what it is.
That's what we're looking to do. We feel, we put together a really nice career planner here, certainly willing to do any work that I need to do to add to it, or take away for your satisfaction. But this is a document that we feel is best we can offer our students next year. It really was a lot of work on our counseling office, it was a lot of work on our department chairs, it was a lot of work on our teachers, and I thank them for it. So that's where we are right now, and we can certainly have discussions about how you'd like that broken out.
You still didn't answer the question.
People doing, I guess it's a time, we want to get on, so it goes on to first a discussion.
Why change it? Ask the question, since they can't give you anything.
She just said it doesn't matter.
It's not gonna be voted on, nothing's going, that's what next week's about. It'll go through as a discussion item, we had a couple of recommendations here, so we'll have back and forth, we'll have more discussion, next have directions.
No, they can't.
Yeah, I think it went up, it went up one.
And I have more, if you'd like one more.
Not about animosity.
It ain't about animosity, it's about, we can't trust you.
Right, you're not telling the parents, this is, the kids go to school here, the parents need to be involved, and she explained that.
She, she, she'll be here. She gonna care.
So it's only for the administration and board, so our...
That's fine.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna discuss it with the parents, right?
We can't, we don't even get to see it.
She just said it doesn't matter, didn't you hear?
I'm trying to make it so that you guys can see what this is, I want to make sure we can get this out so you guys have time to review it, and then finally, so that we're...
We should take baby steps.
So you'll get to see this.
I don't think that there's any problem with the career planner.
No, it's great.
As she presented it, and no one here is saying that nobody, that we're not appreciative of all the work that was done. All that we're saying is, is that you need to look at the other pieces, so just like, I forget his name, Mr. Principal from Fredericksburg, I am so sorry, I forgot your name. And he, Mr. Vogt, thank you, he made a very good point.
He got integrity at law.
Like, as I'm saying, as a parent who is sitting here, you, it again appears as if you are going to not listen to anything that we have to say, and you shove stuff down our throats.
Exactly.
And I have an ear. And if you think I'm gonna let you shove something down my throat, again, after last year, when I have sat here and worked my tail off to work with every one of you, you have another thing coming. I am not gonna sit here and allow this to happen, this is not right. You did it last year, the board backed you, it's not okay.
And they're saying that the board doesn't need to decide.
No one's saying that you...
No, okay, let's just talk, see, you guys want to just shut us off.
And you know exactly what we're talking about, Mrs. Passler.
Don't want to hear the truth, I guess.
As long as she can eliminate the parents, that's all she's worried about.
Damn shame.
HR can stay here, remove the budget.
Oh, good, HR's here, that's where I'm staying.
Right where I'm at, I'm going wherever Jen's going.
Budget's not much on here, so they can go...
Where's Jen going?
Back, going back here.
I'm staying right here, I like this team better.
Go to fifth grade with Rizzo, and then I'm gonna pull him from Northern Lebanon High School, unless Rizzo eventually becomes principal here, and then we'll all be happy.
Oh, my gosh, can he become president?
It's just, come listen, nobody has animosity.
I hate the comment, well, the administration just decided, and nobody has a say. Like, I'm so sick of that, it's ridiculous.
But it's true, though, they do what they want.
People just need to be able to be adults, that's... Why is everybody so, like, why is it so controlled?
I feel very bad today.
HR, HR this way.
I appreciate the email about snorting smarties.
Shit, I snorted better smarties than that. About thirty years ago.
Yeah, Jared says like, it was like a big thing.
We gotta keep all...
She can't even look at you, she can't answer questions, she just sits there and shakes her head, it's so annoying.
I'm in the relations committee. Ms. Pat, you need to know everybody that's here.
She's not loud.
Okay, oh, you know I'm a big mouth. So this is just the same procedure, right, this is human relations committee, I will introduce the items. Administrator is Mr. Skogen, are you gonna throw in for Dr. Bensel as administrative? Do you like someone else? You'll do it, okay? Okay, sure. And then we will discuss, and then public comments is after each item prior to us deciding if it's gonna be a consent item or a discussion item for next week. Any questions about the procedure?
Do you have any other papers, the agenda paper? Me and, me and, thank you, sir. Thank you kindly, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, first item is approving the following employment as professional substitutes upon effective satisfactory completion of all necessary pre-employment requirements. The two names there are Nicole Diem and then Ruth Sibena Carrera. And they are both IU individuals. Are there any thoughts on that, any discussion? Have a comment?
I have a question, maybe Mr. Ruth can answer this. Can you tell me, is that Carrera, look, is she currently a substitute? Has she substituted this year?
It's not a name I'm familiar with, and neither being recommended by the IU, which goes through a different process than what our internal folks do.
Okay, I just was wondering, because that was a new name for me, but I knew it was similar to...
We'll check it out for you, don't worry.
It was a similar name to a substitute that has been subbing in the district, so I wasn't sure if that was her or not. That's not the same one? Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Unless there's any objection, I would recommend that as a consent item. Okay, number two, approve the following employments as classified substitutes effective upon satisfactory commitment out of all pre-employment requirements. Aaron Signor, Jean Bolz, and Valerie Muir. Board member feedback? Board member feedback? Public comment? Consent, any objection to consent? Oh, there's Jean Bolts down there.
Who?
About five more days.
Yeah.
To retire or to work?
A substitute, Arlo.
Okay, moving on, item three, approve Brian Campbell as mentor for Lisa Koval for eighteen, nineteen school year compensation as outlined in our current bargaining agreement. Um, discussion, board discussion?
She had to be mentored the whole year.
It's not your turn yet.
Oh, sorry.
Board discussion. Public comment, Mr. Miller.
Now you can ask.
I forgot what I even said.
I'm sorry.
No, does, does he have to sh, sh, or mentor her the whole entire year?
Yes, there, there is a process for mentoring, Mr. Vogt, would you like to talk about, or are you comfortable talking about?
Yeah, it's part of the induction process, but all of the new employees in our district.
So he like, brings them along and shows them the road.
Correct.
Gotcha, thank you.
Is that just one year, or is there, okay.
Yes, one year.
And then they get compensated.
Induction is three years.
That's what, that's what I just said to him, I was like, I thought it was three years.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to Lisa's previous experience, because she may have gone through an induction program, but when they're new to our district, they get a, a, a person to mentor for the year.
Three year.
Mentor for a year.
If, right, if she hasn't already gone through induction in the other district, and again, I don't know if you have background.
Anything else? Okay, any objection to that being consent? No, okay. Item four, approve the following leave requests, these requests meet Northern Lebanon School Leave Policy. Sherry Eisenhower Instructional Assistant at High School for Leave October twenty-fourth to November seventh. Benjamin Wanger Assistant High School Principal for Leave of Absence from or about November twelfth until around January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Any, any feedback from board members?
My only concern is that we will have overlap with Mr. Reese being out now, as well as Mr. Wanger.
Oh, no.
So, we'll have two administrators out at the same time.
I did, I did talk to Mr. Scoggin, and he is working on a plan. Um, we've already discussed it, we're aware, we're trying to be proactive instead of reactive. So, he's already going to make some recommendations to the board of what we can do, um, in the event that those two, um, leaves do overlap.
Correct, that's, that's so, my only concern, I want to be proactive in that. Do we ever, do we ever announce in this district, is it FMLA or?
That I'm gonna.
Yeah. We used it for breast, the breast thing last year.
It just says, well, the only thing is, it just says for leave.
Family medical leave. Damn, I know a little bit more than you.
Be specific in our actual work.
Sure.
Okay.
Anything else?
So, when Wanger is out, are we allowed to go to Mr. Reese if we have a problem? Is that allowed, if we have a high school problem, can we go to Mr. Reese?
Should be.
At this point in time, the function is a tipper, so that would be yes.
Okay.
As a team up there, so, we're administrators, so that's, we're operating right now, so yes.
And he won't make you smile.
Anything else? Okay, um, any objection to that being consent?
You'll make? I went to a state.
And I'm saying consent for that. Great tenure to Tiffany Hogg from November eleventh, two thousand eighteen, I believe she's third grade teacher in your building, Mr. Vogt?
Not mine.
No. Oh, you're seeing that over, great.
He should, so you were.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. No, she's second, okay. And that does follow our policy as well as the teacher contract. Any questions on behalf of the board? Have a comment? Good, okay. Um, I would say that then, let's add that as consent, please. Number six on the back, resignation of Shannon Geeseman, who is Instructional Assistant at Fredericksburg effective October twelfth, her personal reasons. Board questions? Public comment?
I just think it's a shame. I think it's a shame that she's gone.
Uh, consent item. Number seven, ratify and approve the following employments, re-designate Mark Hubbard from day-to-day substitute to short-term professional substitute position of Earth and Space Science Teacher, effective October eighth to the end to end on December twenty-first, with compensation at Bachelor Step fourteen per diem. Vacancy, uh, Derek.
Margatton.
Margatton.
He had a baby. Well, his wife had a baby.
Francis Kin, Kizner, short-term professional substitute position of Physics Teacher, effective October eleventh to the end or about November twenty-eighth, compensation Bachelor Step fourteen per diem, vacancy of Kathy Smith. Board questions? Have a comment?
So he actually doesn't return back to work until the second of January, like the rest of, everybody does? Because we're out the twenty-first, right, of December? Aren't we out that day? Isn't that when? Yeah, I think that, I think it's the first Christmas break.
Well, if it's a half-day, he would come up at half-day, um, you know.
I'm just asking, it probably is at the end of Christmas break. Because I think he told the class that he would be back on like, the second or third, whenever they would come back, so.
Consent item? Okay. Number eight, approve the following employments, Tiffany Leshaw, Personal Care Assistant at East, ten, ten an hour, continue as long as the need exists, this is a new position. Jamari Regal, Personal Care Assistant at Jonestown, ten, ten an hour, until the need, as long as need exists, new position. Redesignate Cynthia Eschelman, part-time Fredericksburg Instructional Assistant, full-time Emotional Support Assistant, seven hours, twenty minutes, no change in hourly rate, effective November fourteenth. That's in, uh, the vacancy for Shannon Geeseman. Redesignate Amy Hilligas, part-time Fredericksburg PCA to full-time Emotional Support Assistant PCA. No change in hourly rate, fulfilling the right redesignation of Cynthia Eschelman. And Lori Lowe, sixth grade teacher, compensation at Bachelor Step eleven, yearly salary forty-nine, eight fifty-seven, prorated according to the salary schedule, effective date December third, pending completion of pre-employment requirements. I'm sorry, I was supposed to change that.
To be determined for them.
Yes, the, the, if, the effective date, if everybody can make note on theirs, and I did have this, this was a change. It's effective date to be determined, and that is not because of pre-employment requirements, it's because of a release date at her previous supporter, so, sorry for that, that was a last-minute change. So if you wanna make notes on, on your, um, agendas, and that's in regard to the re, re, resignation of Ryan Marriott. Board questions, was that simple? Um, because Lori's coming in, into the school year, so she's going to pick, Ryan has resigned, so she's gonna be picking up Ryan's classroom.
Prorating, we need to get paid for what she's been here for.
All right, all right.
Right.
Um, public comment?
Number four, Amy Hilligas was in part-time instructional aide, we're just, I just wanna make sure I get it right, she was, now, she was an instructional aide part-time, and she's filling a point-five emotional support, so we're really using her in dual roles. Part of her day will be instructional support with our learning support, um, teacher in the building. The other part of the day will be point-five, supporting our emotional support classroom. So I don't know if that's important designation, but I do wanna be a front of the board, how we, how we did, how we did that. So it's not a full-time emotional support, half-time, part-time support, half-time, yes, but it's a full-time, makes it a good position.
It's a full-time position.
So therefore Cynthia is doing the other half of the emotional support?
Yes, Cynthia filled Shannon Geeseman's position, so she's now full-time. Cynthia's position was the point-five emotional support, which Amy Hilligas is filling. But Amy was already with us as a half-time instructional aide, so.
That makes sense, yeah, thanks for that. Is she good?
I have a special ed teacher would be upset if she went full-time emotional support. Mr. Brewer.
Racker Brewer.
I stay out of it, I don't talk shop at all. I don't talk shop at all, man.
I think that's just good to know for public, because that shows that you're looking to utilize some personnel that maybe you have that would be willing to go full-time, and so, I, I think it's just important to notate that, because it just shows.
We like to keep good people.
Exactly, it, it shows progress, it shows niceness.
Part of the decision was.
No, I know.
This old guest had wanted full-time, uh, at that time, there was not full-time available. I know my discussions with Mr. Scoggin, this was an employee that highly qualified, and we really wanted to keep this individual, so.
I, I think that's just good for public knowledge, as much as you can give, that's good to know.
Thank you for that feedback, I think that is important. I would agree that using our staff effectively and, um, also valuing the work that they do, and perhaps, so thank you for that, Mr. Vogt.
Well, we also, we appreciate, uh, Mr. Scoggin, because that did require this person to get benefits, because it went to a full-time person. Had we hired somebody else as a point-five.
Right.
It wouldn't have been benefits, but we feel that the students benefit from this individual being full-time at Fredericksburg. So we thank you for the part.
As somebody that worked without benefits for six years, to be at a full-time position, that is clear to hear. And I was gonna say that, you know, in response to that, that is why a lot of our, a lot of our PCA's and a lot of our aides, instructional aides are part-time, is because we're saving the district the benefits. But it's a balance of value in your employees and getting the vast and qualified employees with a cost savings to the district, but I'm glad we made the decision for fully benefits first. Anything else? Okay, I would say consent, I know there's multiple items there, is there any objection to consent for that? Okay, moving on to nine, approving the statement of work with GDC for Information Technology Services, November fourteenth to May fifteenth, rate forty-five dollars an hour.
Hello, Mr. McGee, miss.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
This is our.
Is this your department?
This is.
Okay.
We've been doing extensive interviewing, uh, trying to fill the, watch the tech positions. And, because some we made out, we lost two positions over the summer, it's put a big strain on our technology department, and it's filtered down into the classrooms where that need is being filled, so, uh, we're trying to get those, we're getting this one position filled in the meantime, so, we found a guy that we really like. He's got some tech skills, but he's also got, he also has a great personality, uh, that would fit in very nice, so, um, we'll see how that goes. So basically, the way, uh, this was set up, he's not an actual full-time employee, he's an employee of the company GDC. So GDC would hire him full-time, and they would provide the benefits and the salary. We would pay GDC a set amount, they'd take care of the rest, he was technically an employee of theirs for six months. At any time, we can decide to hire him full-time, if that's what we choose, or we can let him go if he doesn't work out.
Those are, that's a higher, that's a higher position, yes.
Okay, so it's like a six-month interview?
Six months, that's right, right.
Does he, does he have a set number of hours?
Yeah, he'll be full-time, just like our other technician, so he'll work from eight to four, and he'll have the same amount of work, work days.
Wait, does it have a string? Full-time.
Hmm?
Correct.
Did you interview?
Yes.
Um, and will you be supervising this individual?
Yes.
Eight to four.
Any other questions, if an individual would go through all the same clearings?
Yeah, it's already been taken care of.
Was it your recommendation?
Highest.
But he's probably not getting that.
Is this, uh, um, is this doing, the agreement we had with the IU, does this replace one of those people, or is this totally separate?
It's completely separate, so we also have the IU as our backup support for some of the heavy lifting, networking capabilities. So this, this position is for simple desktop support, going and fixing the smartboards, reimagining computers, changing passwords. Other hands on the ground.
And are we paying the IU person as well?
So.
As this person?
Yes, so it's separate, so we have a contract with the intervening unit, and they're doing heavy lifting for us, okay? This is a completely separate position, I don't know if you remember me saying there were two positions that we lost over the summer?
Right.
Okay, so this position is for desktop support.
For desktop support as far as what?
Which is changing passwords, reimagining computers, fixing the smartboards, going to classrooms, helping teachers with some of the needs they need.
So is that basically done what Brett's doing?
Yes, it's basically the same position what Brett's doing. And the IU is doing what Keith did, what Keith is doing. Does that make sense?
It does, I'm just wondering, is it comparative to, to what Brett's doing, salary-wise, that too?
He's making less than Brett, uh, Brett's business.
Well, we just said we, we wanna keep good people, we're really good people, I don't want to have somebody who may not pay a lot more than a lot.
No, 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 he's not making one. I mean, that's, Lee, I'd probably speak better than.
Oh, I know, that's okay, I don't need to know, I'm just thinking in general, air-wise.
Okay, so I have a question, so my math could be very wrong, because I suck at it, but at forty-five dollars an hour for eight hours, that's three hundred and seventy dollars a day that we're paying this guy, to be a ten.
There's benefits included, we're paying the, we're paying the company GDC.
Right, but at forty-five dollars an hour rate, at three hundred and seventy, I need to get a job like that, at three hundred and seventy dollars a day, and yet, this got.
No, 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 that's salary.
Well, I, I'm.
It's benefits included.
Right, but I'm, I'm, I'm asking for clarification, because I do understand how temp works. I did it for many years, so temp is you, the, the person gets paid a, a specific rate. That rate is dictated depending on how much the company that they are working for is going to pay for their benefits and everything else, and the company in which they will be working for, and the temp takes part of that, and then their salary gets done that way. But like, I get that, but the rate specifically says here at forty-five dollars an hour. So, again, my math could be wrong, because I suck at math completely, but at eight hours a day, that's three hundred and seventy dollars an hour.
This isn't for the individual, this is for the agency.
Right, and he might be getting twenty-six or something.
Okay, so, okay.
And, and not to the agency.
We're paying for his lunch, though, too?
Yes.
Just saying.
Say that again, Mr. Miller.
Are we paying for his lunch, too? Because eight to four is eight hours.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we're paying the company that much money.
We're gonna need to dock, woo, dock some pay here now, come on now.
Cheaper to pay him.
Brad, what do you think, Brad? You, you out of it, man. Them smarties kicked your butt over the weekend.
I think the other thing to consider, and this is just me thinking out loud, is.
I mean, I'm all for paying for a lunch, I don't give a chump as that. I'd hate for the man to get his paycheck and be missing five hours.
We're holding together this district, and I don't know how they're doing it. And, you know, from my own experiences, having someone from the IU sit behind a computer and be able to, you know, there's a limited amount of work that those people can do, you need the hands-on individuals. And knowing that we have a small group, uh, for our technology team, I would want to have the good match to that team. A team of three is very difficult, if you get the wrong individual on that team of three.
Destroy it. I need all them pass codes.
So, I think going back to what we were saying about personnel, I think, I, and I, I would communicate to my six-month interview, or however long. Six-month interview, or however long, and if he clicks with your team, then if you bring us that recommendation, I think then we look at how much we're...
That's what I'm asking.
There you go.
But I don't think we're at that point yet.
We don't need to go to the six-month period, because we're going to be sucking in tons more money that way. So, if it appears that, all I'm saying is, let us be good stewards at the fact of the money that we have. This is a lot of money to be working out, even though we're paying, like, he might not be getting that money, but he's getting a portion of that. But it will benefit the district by bringing him on as soon as you see that that much is. Because this is a lot of money per day, a five-day week.
At least, we're gonna pay him seventy-five when he comes on.
No, we're not.
But I, I do think that, you know, and to you and Brett, I know Brett's not here to be able to say that, but I, I don't know how you guys are doing with all the things, from the infrastructure to the networking, to the day-to-day fixes, so, um, you know, the board would definitely want an update, and I think at some point it would be helpful as well, just kind of general.
The laptops and stuff. Just the tool?
Is there anything else for that agenda item?
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, we had some discussion on it, but is anybody, um, concerned about that being a consent item?
I think that's a good idea, sure. He's worth the wait and wait.
Done. That is all for the Human Relations Committee. Two things I just wanna make note, and then I'll, with my big, loud voice, I'll say it, so everybody over there, if you did not hear, we have a budget workshop coming up December eleventh. Um, that is on the same night, we planned it on the same night of the board meeting, hoping that we can get more individuals to come out. And also wanted to, mostly for board members, but public can hear of the process as well. December is our reorganization meeting, so we will be, um, having two meetings that night, a reorganization and then our typical committee meetings. Mrs. Mur- Director Murray has agreed to be the dominating committee. So, I sent out an email today, if you would like to nominate President, Vice President, or both, you can submit those names to her. She will then contact individuals, directors, to see if they would like their name to be on the ballot. All names will go to Mrs. Martin, and then we will vote on that first meeting in December for reorganization. At that point, um, then the President will make decisions of where board members, I know tonight you were kinda bouncing around just to kinda get the feel, but board members start thinking about what your preferences are, so if there's a certain committee that you'd like to be a part of. Yes.
Next week, is it back to normal?
Next week will be seven o'clock, official meeting, and yes.
And then the following?
Meetings have always been.
And then December will have this same type of thing?
December will always be committee, first meeting will be committees, second meeting will be more what you're accustomed to.
Broken-up committee, right?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yep.
That's cool, okay.
And the whole thought process is, I know that there's a lot of questions, is just to be able to have more open dialogue. I mean, we do have a procedure of having board and then public comment, but I think information is more free-flowing this way. And hopefully, my thought is, we'll be able to give you back to your families and get us to our families at a reasonable time, because these eleven o'clock meetings are killing me, and I'm sure they're killing you as well. So, all the items that we had for consent tonight, hopefully the public had that opportunity.